...to the end of the public forum. So apologies, I received an apology from Councilor Lawson. The Chair here today. Thank you, Senators, Councilor Pete, oh, put motion that be, Senators, apologies, all in favour?
Aye.
Yes?
I'm only actually doing up to him.
Okay, and including in there an apology for early departure from Councilor Calvert, assuming everyone is happy with that. Um, have I put that motion? Thank you. Moving on to confirmation of the agenda. Um, no changes? If not, I would vote that we confirm the agenda to a second, Councilor Pete, thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Yes, against? That's carried. Declaration of interest, just for noting. Minutes of Porto Tago, Ataga Regent's Museum Board, 24th September. Moved, Councilor, the Senate, Councilor Z.
I will clear this one.
Thank you, thank you. Um, any debate on those? No, or put the motion, all those in favour? Against? So item five, the Aranwana League's draft proposal to restore the Aranwana Pilot's Wharf, Lisa, and four days. Any comments that you would like to open, please?
Yes, I would. Quite clear. What we've tried, we've aimed to do with the report is explain where we were, because yes, we are, but that has been taking quite a long time. But we are trying to get all the bits together to make a good decision. Um, we were also aware it was time to inform everybody about where and what perspective it goes, so we don't start doing things that might not be wanted. I do want to stress the fact our recommendation was to continue to work, even though somewhere in the list it was just that we were trying to demolish it today, but that was not our recommendation. It was quite good to be clear on that.
Thank you. Oh, charge of Councilor Pete and Paul.
Thank you. Um, I'm looking at page 59, which is the letter from Porto Tago over to the signature from 2010, um, which is the Porto Tago view of the history and the facts of the matter. Do you have any disagreement with the items, the material presented in that letter?
Through the Chair, um, this matter was dealt with at the senior management level and some decisions and outcomes were made at that level. So the work that we're doing now is to, um, to move forward on the basis that Council has accepted ownership of the asset.
Well, that's what I was looking for, because the history is quite a sad matter and I'll address that in the body of the meeting at the moment. In terms of the facts of ownership and how that came about, you think this letter is an accurate presentation of what transpired? Or Mr. Harland did at the time?
If I may, through the Chair, the letter itself identifies or portrays that the asset came across to Council in 1989. Um, the Council did take across all of the recreation used assets at that time. This one was understood to still be being used by Porto Tago, hence the title of Pilot's Wharf, for their purposes, and was not picked up at that time by Council for general maintenance, otherwise it wouldn't have been in the status.
But there's no dispute about the decision coming out of local government reorganisation and the operational recreational split around the assets and the income from Chalmers property, et cetera.
Um, through the Chair, in principle and general, no.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Beattie.
On 5.2 of your report, it says in the second paragraph in the background, it says that the Council has only recently accepted ownership responsibility for the former Aranwana Pilot's Wharf. Who in particular accepted the responsibility and why?
Um, if I may, through the Chair, again, that goes back to decisions that were made at the senior management level. And I can't comment on those particular decisions that were made.
So what you're saying is that senior management made the decision to accept ownership responsibility, but you don't know why they did that?
Um, correct.
Okay, I think if there are further questions on that matter, we would need to ask someone in senior management who was here at the time to make some comment, because I think staff have been clear that that was not a decision made at the same. Councilor Calvert?
It's confusing to me that we can have something that is agreed to be something that requires demolition or for a on its own account sooner or later. Porto Tago thought that. And on the other hand, that somehow we leave the permission, and I use that word sort of loosely, from heritage people as to whether we would be allowed to demolish it. Is it more position as staff that we would require an expensive heritage assessment before we would be able to make a decision about it, either demolishing it or even actively similar, what can be pulled down or restoring?
Um, through the Chair, what we've been advised is that we need an archaeological assessment, which is slightly different to the heritage impact assessment. Um, what that will do is just inform us as to whether or not any of the existing timbers and piles are pre-1900. If none of them are, with this particular asset, the history is very, very unclear. There has been a number of farm wharfs probably in or around that location, but nobody's very clear around whether or not the existing piles or timber are actually part of those existing wharfs. So an archaeological assessment will give us that information and then inform us or allow us to talk to Heritage New Zealand around how we then deal with it, either through a demolition project or restoration.
So who, you say, you have been, we have been advised that we require an archaeological assessment, whom, who liable?
Um, through the Chair, um, by the local manager of Heritage New Zealand.
So if we did nothing and it fell down?
Um, through the Chair, if we did nothing and it fell down, we'd be liable for any material responsibilities. I mean, we can't allow anything to start falling off and going into the channel. We do have a responsibility as an asset owner to make sure that it either is restored or removed to stop any heritage hazard.
But not an obligation to heritage archaeological? What I'm trying to figure out here is how come we can have somebody interposing themselves in the middle of something that we may be, on the one hand, obliged to demolish factory wise, demolish or restore or do something with, and on the other hand, may not be allowed to? And that somehow somebody should be paid $5,000 to tell us one or the other? We, quite clearly, we can't be obliged to do both.
Um, is that a question?
Yes, I'd...
What?
Are we just being told by them that they want to be in the middle of that and we have to pay them to do something, or?
I think it's... Yeah, it's standard practice for pre-1900 structures that a heritage assessment has been done as part of any reconstruction or redevelopment, as I understand it. So if we are, as the asset owner, are intending to do that, conduct that work, then the owners is on us to do that assessment. Is that what you were seeking, or seeking?
Yes, I was sort of seeking clarification from the staff, whether they understand that we are obliged to... Rather, I mean, it's, we get our advice about what we're obliged to do, but that's why I was asking staff.
Do you have the clarification you're seeking?
No, I don't, no, by the way.
Okay. Councilor Thompson?
The, the two reports, page one, well, page 516, and then, which seems to conclude that the jetty wasn't approved until 1909, and then a couple of pages later, on page 520, it suggested that it is pre-1900. And these, both of these seem to have been prepared relatively, maybe a year apart by the best. So, um, which do we put weight on?
We're in the middle of trying to find out where we are going with this. We, um, we become aware of the fact that if we want to demolish this or do something else or restore it, this is one of the things that has been, been advised that we would probably need to do. If we get down and go down into the market for this and find out that archaeological research is not needed, we will be doing that. But at the moment, this is the information we've got barely days before we put up the report to come back here. So it is for us to make sure that we're not spending money when we don't need to spend money. That's something in the way with that.
So are we entitled, if we are confident that the evidence suggests that it's post-1900, we don't have to go out and ask somebody else to double check that for us?
We will check that process before we start spending money.
Um, my second question relates to the two options. And to be honest, I'm, I'm not clear, um, what the difference in practical outcome is of two options. I can see that the two options are different processes, but I don't really understand whether option two means that, um, the, the wharf couldn't be rebuilt, or is just a different process to the same end. Doesn't make that clear, and I don't, I don't...
If I may, through the Chair, option two is just trying to keep on the table, the option that has been left lying on the table from the previous report, that actually did suggest that the wharf be demolished in its entirety. So it's just keeping that in the mix of options, basically.
Okay, but what I'm, but what I'm asking, I suppose, is if, if option two were to take place, what is the practical meaning of that in terms of the League's ability to, to build a wharf there?
If I may, through the Chair, if the Council decided that it wanted to demolish the wharf, the League, all it can do is lobby Council to change its decision. It doesn't have any ability to continue any restoration project.
But, but, I'm not, I'm not being very clear. Um, what, I asked earlier when the League people were here, to what extent is this a rebuild, trying to use some existing reclaimed materials versus a restoration? Clear impression I got was that it's, it's, it's a rebuild, trying to reuse some salvage materials. It's not a, um, the word used was if we can find one post that we can leave there, even if it's to tie a boat up. So I, so I'm not sure that I, it strikes me that things are going to get knocked down anyway. The only difference is whether or not somebody cuts the material away, so it can't be reused in a rebuild. So that's what I'm trying to understand. I, I can see that option one is the more facilitated of option, um, but, uh, but I'm not clear if, either way, how it impacts on the League's proposal.
If I, if I may, I think the, um, the reason the League was keen not to see the structure demolished is that whilst it exists and is there, there is an existing consent for that. Once it is demolished, then there is a process that needs to go through, needs to be gone through again, which is a resource consent to establish or erect a new structure in that location. So staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that that is the, the League's, when, when they heard it was going to be demolished, the request was that it remained whilst they identified whether or not restoration or replacement effectively of that wharf was possible before it was removed for that reason.
Through the Chair, yes, I can clarify that, absolutely the case, and that was, I guess, the advice that was given in the Ataga Regional Council originally, when we all sat around the table to look at options. Um, there, when it comes to, um, the existence of the structure, Ataga Regional Council have acknowledged that it's not a permanent structure, but the staying rules apply to it, and any work that's done to restore or replace it with an existing footprint does allow for a rebuild to occur with an existing footprint to be managed under the, um, under the, I guess, the loose word of maintenance.
But if there were, if, if a period of time were to elapse between the structure being removed and rebuilt, lest the one pile left to tie a boat up, that would mean that they had to start all over again?
Correct, and that would then trigger a resource consent requirement.
And the last question, which has gone round, if I get that sneeze, it's quite taken me quite...
I'm back.
I'll come back to it.
Um, Councilor Pete, then Councilor Goodwin, Councilor Beattie, be next, Tom.
Tom?
It's you, Tom.
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, let me sort all of it. The Glenfellack Wharf and the Portobello Wharf, um, do you know, Helen? It's possibly an unfair question, and I don't understand that at the outset, but do you know, um, just ballpark figures to the cost of the maintenance of both those wharfs and who's responsible? I think Portobello is the city, but I'm not sure about Glenfellack.
It's through the Chair, Glenfellack is also the city's responsibility. I don't have a ballpark figure off the top of my head, but I can certainly find that and distribute it to Councilors if it was of interest and provided some background information. Um, it has been identified that perhaps the value of that particular duty that Glenfellack might be around, the maintenance cost would sit for any new, um, or any restored wharf at Aranwana. So those figures will be included in any future report. Um, the only difference would be the accessibility of how any maintenance work would be accessed between the two, given that there's no vehicle access down at Aranwana, would be the difference.
Thank you.
Councilor Paul, please.
Thank you. Um, if we accept the regional council's telling of events, and as such, we have been the owners of this wharf since 1989, you would imagine that the modifications called for in 1991 and/or the repairs commissioned in 2006 would involve some conversations with the owners, which would be us. Um, is there any correspondence or any conversations historically that you're aware of at either of those points or any others involving the City Council as owners of the asset?
Um, through the Chair, we did get some research done, and there's just no evidence or no paper we could all that we can find in our records, um, post-1989 regarding that.
Thank you.
Um, I'm inclined to go over the people that haven't had round one questions and then count to round two, if that's okay with round two questions. So Councilor Pete, then Councilor White.
Just in terms of the cost of an archaeological assessment being between $2,000 and $5,000, I'm just wondering how that can be justified when we're looking at just simply a desktop research of records to establish whether some piles or maybe some timbers of the jetty itself were pre-1900? I don't, I don't understand how, how that might cost that much.
Um, through the Chair, it's just been a ballpark figure that's been put up. I will be following up this week to try and find, um, some people that can, um, that can carry out that work to get a better understanding of it, and also the timeframe in which they can do it. Um, obviously, we're be looking at trying to, to achieve, um, a lowest cost value for that work as much as we can. It was just trying to put some figure in there to indicate that there is a, a cost that's going to be associated with it.
Councilor White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, what is the length of the Portobello Wharf?
Portobello Wharf?
Yeah, what's the length of the Portob, because it's 450km for, to build it, so if we're looking at a 10 metre, I'm just trying to work with some rough.
Through the Chair, I don't know, this figure's off the top of my head, but the Portobello Wharf is, is a concrete build, got concrete piles, so it's a completely different structure. So it wouldn't be likely to try and compare a restoration of timber with the concrete one.
Do we have any, I couldn't see, there's no indication of what the rebuild cost would be?
Uh, through the Chair, that the League have estimated that the rebuild would be around about $100,000 is what they're proposing.
Okay, that would, that would be, such like, that would be, that's what they were looking to raise? Okay. Is there any discussion with the Harbour cycleway network on whether they would use it if it was built or restored?
Through the Chair, um, no, we haven't engaged directly with them. We are aware that at this stage, the cycleway on their side of the harbour is planned to get down to Chalmers. Um, so I think to see whether or not there was any off-road options that we're being looked at down to Aranwana, but, um, my assumptions would be that, that that would get to the Aranwana community area, opposed to necessarily try to achieve a direct link to the wharf at this stage.
Okay. And finally, from what I can read here, it seems to me that in 1989, um, the DCC, the Porto Tago and all regional councils received all the commercial assets of guarding wharfs and structures, wharfs and structures, while the DCC received all recreational assets. What other costs around the harbour we likely looking at as well?
Um, through the Chair, all the other, um, I guess harbour access jetty are either owned and maintained by the Council or owned and maintained by active boat clubs. So they're all, I guess what I'm trying to say is that all the other ones around the harbour have been accounted for, so there's nothing outstanding up there.
So no surprises?
Councilor Beattie?
Thank you. Just looking at page 526, 27, and the elegant and persuasive letter from Mr. Reese to Mr. Plunkett, some year and nine months after the other letter. Was there ever a reply received? Doesn't appear to be in the papers. Mr. Reese is shaking his head, thank you.
Councilor Thompson?
My question has come back to me. Um, the, what is the possibility here that Heritage New Zealand will consider that a, um, a rusting set of wooden posts is in somewhere up there with stone hengs and requires to be retained rather than, um, rather than restored into a jetty again?
Another question we're getting is actually doing what we're actually recommending to do, is that's to find out more, and this is another one we are going to find out more about as well.
Um, it's, it strikes me that option, it could be a toss-up between, um, option two and taking your chances on a resource consent, and option one and taking your chances on knocking it out to touch the damn thing. Is, I mean, is that, is that a, is that a possibility? That's really what I'm asking, is there a possibility that this process could be taking us down a path? We would fact we discovered that, because this is a historic monument now, it can't be destroyed.
I guess through the Chair, I mean, we are continuing to have ongoing discussions with Heritage New Zealand, and they're very aware of the condition of this asset and very aware of any potential hazard that it might cause. Um, what they will be looking at is to make sure that a reasonable process has been gone through, if demolition ends up being the outcome that Council want to seek from it. There may be some provision that they want to see about how to identify that location in the future. Um, so part of the archaeological assessment will actually inform us and tell us on how we need to treat or manage any of the existing piles, if they are deemed to be pre-1900. And it may be that there's some sort of interpretation, um, information that's required to be put together as part of the, um, the package of demolition that's being sought from the Council.
Councilor Calvert?
On page 5.5, the disadvantages are described, there's two lots of $2,000 to $5,000, one archaeological and one heritage, and I understood you earlier to be saying that that was sort of the same thing. I'm a bit confused.
Through the Chair, there are two different pieces of, um, of work. The archaeological assessment will tell us about whether or not it's pre-1900 or, or not. If it's not, we're not probably, we're not required to do a heritage impact assessment. Yeah.
So if we would have to do one, partly your recommendation, I'm not clear about whether your intention would be that the, um, Aranwana League would be expected to pay for, it says to complete their proposal and obtain, and I'm not sure who would be the, doing the, the obtaining?
Okay, through the Chair, um, it's, it's reasonable to, um, to see the Council funding the archaeological assessment, but anything beyond that, so the heritage impact assessment, would fall to the League to complete its part of the proposal.
If, I'm presuming that if we did the archaeological assessment, that whether, whatever we did with it then would require the heritage assessment, or if it was required, it was required anyway. I'm struggling to see why, since we would require it, because we, if, whatever we did with it, it would be required, I don't, I can't see why the League would be up for it. I don't see why it's anything to do with their responsibility if we'd have to have it anyway.
Through the Chair, my understanding of the heritage impact assessment is to identify and understand how the, um, the structure will impact on the wider environment that it sits in and how access will be made to it. So it's, because it's such a sensitive area and it's crossing through a conservation area, that the heritage impact assessment will assess the catastrophe and all needs for any vehicles to get to it and how that proposes to recur in that sort of area.
If it's in the same, if it's like, like the like are at the same area and such, that it doesn't need a reason to concede, I can't see why heritage could all of a sudden be wanting to know what is happening in the future with something that is essentially the same thing over small. I'm just, why is it anything to do with the League rather than our responsibility? That's what I'm struggling with.
Through the Chair, um, a resource consent, or if the, if the structure remained and was restored, it will need to be brought up to a standard that will then, um, not, not trigger a resource consent, but will trigger the conditions under which resource consents are normally managed. So the Ataga Regional Council would provide a set of good compliance, and that would trigger ongoing inspection, regening, and other harbour structures. In respect to, if, if the, if the wharf was demolished and removed, there wouldn't be any impacts on the, um, the wider environment. If the structure was restored and restored for the purposes that have been proposed by the League, the potential increase in use is, is what's being assessed than what the current use of it is at the moment.
Lisa, under which piece of legislation is the heritage impact assessment required?
Um, we've been advised by Heritage New Zealand for that, so I... So I can only assume that it's under the, under their legislation. But again, from the conversation that I have had, if the, if any of the structures deemed not to be pre-1900s, then that assessment is less necessary than what they're anticipating at the moment.
So the Heritage New Zealand Heritage Impact Assessment would cover matters pertaining to access and ecological impact? That seems a little odd. Okay. Returning to my list, Counselor Hawkins, then Mea Cowan, then Counselor Lord.
Picking up on this heritage impact assessment as well, we heard from the League that they were surprised by that it would be their responsibility to pay for the heritage impact assessment. Should we go with that recommendation? Is there any particular reason why that would have come as a surprise to them?
Through the chair, as Pauline alluded before, I mean, this, getting the updated proposals from the League and coordinating the meetings with the affected parties happened over a very, very short period of time. And they were advised of the recommendations at the time that the report was heading onto the agenda. So it's something that hadn't been discussed previously or identified very clearly through Heritage New Zealand. And so it's bringing, and it's about continuing the process, it's bringing the information forward as much as we can. And so that all the parties are aware of what each other, or the expectations that the other parties are having.
Given how long this has taken, this process to get to this point, is there a sense of urgency that I'm missing? I mean, why was there such a rush?
Through the chair, I mean, there was an expectation that we report back on this and this is as far as we've been able to get, while we've been waiting for the revised proposal to come through. What we've identified is still now what needs to happen. And the timeframe of anything continuing to happen will be the availability and timeframe around getting anyone to do an archaeological assessment. We'll drive the next series of meetings and then be able to come back to the committee.
Mea Cowan.
Thank you. Couple of questions. Is it likely that people who would be doing the archaeological assessment might be the same people who would be doing the heritage assessment? And if that's the case, why couldn't they be done together?
Through the chair, that could be very possible. And so one of the things that we could actually look at is getting a two-stage proposal from them. So that if, whatever they needed to be looking at when they're in the water to assess the age of the piles, that they can be doing or thinking about any consideration at that time. It may be that it's done as one project and it's a cross-year opportunity, which could be a cost saving. We could certainly look at that as an option.
Okay. And secondly, given the, well, the chair alluded to the oddity of an environmental assessment being called a heritage assessment or heritage impact assessment. Have we had any independent advice on our legal obligations, both in terms of scope and of the various scenarios? What I'm hearing is that we've had advice from Heritage New Zealand. It seems unclear as to what they mean by heritage assessment. I can't personally see that the effect on the salt marshes could be in any way termed a heritage assessment. So have we had any independent advice as to what council's obligations would be with regard to the scope of those?
Through the chair, no, we haven't sought any level of advice on it. My only, I guess comments back on that would be the mere confusion around the age and the age of any of those piles down there. It's been something that, I guess, given our support for heritage, that we need to at least be doing an archaeological assessment to determine the age. Anything beyond that, if counsel were of a mind for us to follow through and seek whether or not we are legally obliged to do that, I mean, we can certainly look at that.
And the scope of it before the term, thank you.
Counselor Lord, the big council.
I'm very careful what I need to enter debate here, but my question really, I probably should have asked the Arromwana League people, but are we certain, like, I think this is a good idea. I think TDNL, we've built something new. Absolutely think it's a great idea in relation to Counselor Hawkins' question about, is there any haste? I think the old guy in the back alluded to he's not going to live forever. But the one thing I want to know is, perhaps you can only nod your heads over the back row, but are we assured that whatever will be built, will be built to it? It's not going to look like a heap of rocks and a few, you know, some tantalised timber and some old rock and stuff, you know? If I want to propose a motion, I want it to do it on the assurance that we're going to get a nice looking wharf out of it. Is there any way that question could be asked or answered?
Through the chair, the piece of paper that was distributed during the public forum session gives us a bit of a visual as to what the League are wanting to achieve there. The standard and quality of it will have to meet the Ataga Regional Council's certificate of compliance. So it still has to be robust enough to get past that.
Counselor Van Ness.
Getting back to page 5.2, and the council has only recently accepted ownership responsibility. Is there a document that says council has recently accepted ownership responsibility? And if so, why isn't it included?
Through the chair, as I alluded to earlier, I mean, the decision was made to accept asset ownership by senior management. The ownership and the issues that were raised by Porto Tago at the time were never brought up to a council committee to make that decision. So the only documentation is a letter that went back to Porto Tago confirming that it would take over the asset responsibilities at the time.
And why is that letter not included in this report?
Sorry, through the chair, I thought that the response letter would have been contained in the original report.
It's in 2012.
Yeah.
Would it, assuming, would it, is this a staff only to circulate that immediately subsequent to this meeting? Counselor Van Ness.
And a question for Pauline. You said that you had been advised that we probably need to do the archaeological assessment. Who advised and probably need, how strong was that advice?
I was at the meeting myself, which means we, I said I, I meant we. We, through the Heritage New Zealand, we've been advised by Heritage New Zealand that we would need this.
Okay, so it was actually by Heritage New Zealand?
Yes.
And they advised you that you would probably need, they didn't advise that you had to?
I think probably, probably is my wording, but it's their advising, it's up to us, that's why I said probably. It's up to us to clearly confirm that is what we need to do. For the same reasons that were brought up there, that we need to be certain they'll be doing things with the right reason, not spending it on something that shouldn't be, that money shouldn't be spent on.
And sorry, through the chair, one last question. I think it was Lisa that said, it is reasonable for the DCC to fund the archaeological assessment. And whose view was it reasonable?
Through the chair, I guess as parks manager, it's my view. If we need that in order to be able to demolish the wharf, then that's an asset management piece of work that needs to happen, which is my responsibility.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I think the council are doing a bit of a head of issues move.
Absolutely, I've given Pam an additional recommendation, which will be the first recommendation and then the one on the order paper will follow. And I perhaps need to add a couple of additional words into the first recommendation that relates to the concept plan submitted by the League. So the committee recommend that the council support in principle the project driven by the Arromwana League as submitted, the concept plan. Something along those words, so it ties it into what we have on the table today.
Could we clarify that obtaining the assessment involves that? Either clarify who you expect to do it or clarify that we don't yet know who's to do it, it's part of the discussion.
If you'd like to move, sorry, Madam Chair.
Work to complete the proposal and.
And that the council, that's where you wish to obtain it after the assessment? Next up, continue to work with the Arromwana League to complete the proposal. And I think you probably need to, the second half until three, Pam, which reads.
Or maybe you just note as a.
Noting that the council.
And that council.
So I think the, if it reads, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if it reads, that staff continue to work with the Arromwana League to complete the proposal and noting that, instead of and, noting that council will obtain.
Thank you, just a second. Thank you.
The mayor has indicated that he wishes to second.
Can I speak to it, Madam Chair?
You may.
Look, I've had a privilege in working with the Arromwana League as a link person with the city and I've also had a privilege in working with the staff on those projects. So I want to firstly commend both the city staff and the Arromwana League in driving this project in a collaborative fashion to get it to this point. Some of the questions around the table are, at this point, unanswerable and we need obviously to absorb the archaeological assessment once it's completed to probably determine what else is required. And like all historic structures, there is probably a lot of unknown until that work is done. So the questions around from Counselor Thompson, for example, around what potentially could be used in the rescued, restored structure is a very difficult one to answer at this point in time until we actually have that professional advice. The Arromwana community strike me as being a very resilient, sustainable community and have been for a long time. And those words that we often use and banter around this table to make decisions. And they have, for a long period of time, since 2000, around about 2000, have been pushing for some work to occur on the structure. And in terms of how that's to be driven, that's probably been a question that we've all been grappling with with the lead agency, et cetera. Now that that has all been cleared away and council, as the leading city council, clearly own the structure, they are also committed, in my understanding with this report, that once the project is complete, which is, just to confirm, is being driven by the Arromwana League, that once it's complete, that the city are accepting the responsibility to maintain the structure ongoing. And that's very important for the Arromwana League to hear that because it's a big commitment for a small community to raise $100,000. It may be a little bit more, maybe a little bit less, but it's a big, it's a large commitment. And it's a commitment not only from the Arromwana League, but the wider community as well, where you will see businesses coming behind Arromwana League to achieve this project. So that's very important that we, as a council, are accepting that ongoing maintenance. Another thought that hasn't been included in the report, but I know for a fact, any additional functional wharf facility will assist the coastguard if, you know, in an unfortunate situation where there's an emergency. So that's got the potential to assist in that one, the restored structure. In terms of economic development, once again, reflecting on the sort of community that Arromwana is, I would suggest that the activities that would occur once the structure is restored are very sort of passive, low-impact ecotourism type activities. And I think it's also important to realise that the objective to link the harbour, both sides of the harbour, with better wharf facilities is going to be a benefit to all the small communities that actually make up both the East Harbour and West Harbour. That's probably all I've got to say. Perhaps I'll just reserve the right to have a right reply then, Madam Chair, thank you.
Counselor, sorry. We're well past that point. Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just following up on the question I asked during the first session, perhaps we should just reinforce the concern that I certainly had when I had at the time about the local government commissioners' decisions in 1989 in terms of the demise of the Ataga Harbour Wharf because the funding to support commercial port activities went all to the Regional Council of Porto Tago, of course. And we got the good end of the stick with the recreational facilities and none of the cash flow to support those responsibilities. But I think that is the sad fact of the matter. And I think it's really important that we show goodwill to the amazing work that's gone in in the background of this proposal. This is not a group asking for us to build a wharf. This is a group saying it's going to go in and try and raise the funds for itself. And there may be some issues over some of the consent proposals in relation to Heritage New Zealand, who knows? But I do know that, as most of the councillors do, that we have a really good positive working relationship on a daily basis in lots of areas with those who represent and work for Heritage New Zealand. I don't see this as the blockage that it needs to be. I think the motion that has been moved covers the bases and I think we should get on with making sure that this happens. I have no doubt that it will be a resource that is welcome and much used by the wider community. And I'd like to reinforce what Counselor Byrne said about a very substantial effort that's been made by the people who presented to us and anguished over this, actually, for a very long time, much too long. And I think it's beholden on us to make sure it doesn't end up with an unanswered, delayed conversation. I haven't referred to any other long debated projects around the city.
Counselor Van Ness.
To me, the only really sensible comment that I've heard regarding this wharf so far comes from Mr Rees's letter to Geoff Plunkett of December 2011, where he says, "The very least that could be reasonably argued, in my opinion, is that a proposal would be made to council that, quote, 'the structure will be made good and fit for public recreational use by Porto Tago Limited to a standard agreed between us and then gifted to the council to maintain for that purpose in the future.' That's something that I think is reasonable. Mr Rees argues very strongly for that. The history argues very strongly for that. Everything else that I've heard since doesn't. The idea that, for instance, this wharf is going to link both sides of the harbour. We've got links both sides of the harbour, Kerry's Bay, we've got the Port Charners. This is not going to be a link to both sides of the harbour. This is a wharf to nowhere. This is a wharf that has no access to it. And the stretch of no access that currently exists looks like being made bigger by dog. The idea that you're going to have to cycle along the beach to get to this wharf to use it highlights the absurdity of putting money into a wharf to nowhere. It's also absurd to suggest that you can reuse the. It's also absurd to suggest that you can reuse the timbers in the wharf. You do not have to be a builder to look at the photos and realise that this wharf is absolutely failed. The timbers are rotten. The timbers aren't just rotten, they are non-existent at the waterline in most of the pile cases. And if you look at the degree of degradation of the upper timbers, you'll see that nothing there could be reasonably expected to be used. What we're talking about here is a potential collaboration involving yet another project with the DCC, where the ratepayer is going to end up funding a fancy, a wharf to nowhere. The idea that we need more information and that we need professional advice, to me, is simply the same old tactic that has been used in most other madcap projects to be pushed through this council in the last decade. More information until we get to a point where we've got so much information and so much money has been spent and so many consultants have already been paid, that we might as well just get through with the thing anyway because it would be embarrassing not to. This is a wharf to nowhere. For us to be putting money into it by way of archaeological reports or any other kind of assessment is a waste of ratepayers' money. It was never our problem in the first place. It's a pilot's wharf. It was not something for public use has been claimed. I believe that we should be voting against this and all other projects that involve the ratepayer basically being held ransom. The decision has been made by senior management already that we accept ownership responsibility. In my opinion, if senior management want to make that decision, then senior management can pay for all the resulting assessments and they should pay for it out of their own pockets. As a ratepayer's representative, I don't want to bear of it. Vote against, please.
Counselor.
Madam Chair, I support the recommendations. I'm pretty familiar with this wharf and somewhat of the history, but of course, the history is so seemingly nebulous that we can't tell whether even the piles are free 1900. One would have thought the Otago Harbour Board records would show that pretty smartly. But anyway, presumably if we pass this, we'll find out quickly and with that much cost. I am, I think for me, it raised the issue of the fact that for 25 years, this harbour, a major harbour in New Zealand, has had no full-time dedicated harbour master to look after such issues as this and to keep an eye on things. And thankfully, Otago Regional Council seems to be changing its mind about that and is about to appoint somebody else. But I am concerned about water depths at low water springs, both here and at other journeys, but I think we need to be asking questions of the Otago Regional Council in Port Otago about the maintenance of water sufficient for, you know, medium-sized sort of vessels anywhere there. I see it, unlike councillor Vandervis, I do see it having a role not only in recreation, but also in terms of ecotourism, as councillor Neale mentioned. And just finally, road access. I do not support any vehicular road out to this end. I was pleased to hear from the Aromuana League representatives that none of this really were being suggested or proposed because I think there are wildlife values out there that do need to be protected. I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Counselor Z.
I also support the resolution. I see this as, it comes from something for a small community down there. It's not the first time they've been just like that came to us about two or three years ago and we encourage them at that stage. I would still like to encourage them. I think they are a credible group. They have said they'll raise the money. I believe that. I don't think, as councillor Vandervis said, it will be an expensive exercise for our ratepayers. Certainly there will be some funds involved, but I think it's only clear, as we do with supporting other parts of the city, that we can do this for the Aromuana people, although it won't be used exclusively by them. There's a lot of recreational fishermen will use that and as councillor Neale said, perhaps safety aspects as well. It sort of won't be a finish by agreeing to these resolutions because bullet point six says it comes back to the Community Environment Committee. And I'd like to see that in the Resolution summary because it doesn't actually say that. It looks like if we, if everything lines up, then we're recommending that the council support it. Well, there are some issues that have been outlined on page 5.4 that have to be worked through and I think it's the same resolution that comes back to this committee for our final agreement. The other thing on the resolution is that the rescue and restore. Well, I think if we restore it, it will be rescued isn't that sort of logical, if that's the right word we're using, sort of doubling up there. So I don't think we need to have rescued the resort. It's a bit gritty, but I'm being overly pedantic perhaps, but I certainly support the resolution. But I would like to see somewhere in the end send the rules back to this committee for a final recommendation to go through to council. And maybe the form of pilot's wharf to be referred to the Community Environment Committee for final consideration.
So then is once the entire project concept plan has been finalised, is that what you were clarifying?
Yes, but it doesn't actually say that in the resolution. I don't think it's true.
Through the chair, maybe a third recommendation that says something along the lines that a report back to the Community Environment Committee, once the assessments have been, well, do they need to be completed? Well, once we have that information, we'll back on the assessment work if required and the final concept planning. Because that concept plan may be tweaked depending on the assessments.
Once the assessments. And the concept plan finalised.
Yeah, I'd have you, and I mean, it gives us many and guts of the opportunity to say no or yes at that stage. It'll give us much more clarity with regards to the costs that councillor Vandervis raised. So I think that's just a common sense approach.
I would point out that the concept plan could be finalised before it is fully costed. So if you're wishing costs to come back as well, that would probably have to be part of the motion.
Well, the concept plan, I presume, will include how it's going to be funded and what degree the Aromuana group are going to commit to the funding and that's it.
Well, I'll leave it over to the movement.
Well, what I suggest then is end the concept plan, including final costings.
Maybe move the word finalise to before concept plan and the finalised concept plan including final costings.
Including the costings.
Yeah, including the costings. So if you just, yeah, including the costings and move the word finalised, that's at currently the end of the sentence, to just before concept plan. So it reads finalised. Counselor, that movement. Okay. Counselor Wiley.
Thank you. I'll also be supporting this because one of the key issues that I see is that there's a, I'd rather be investing restoration rather than spending council money and removing the remains of this pier wharf. And I'd rather just move forward and I do see the benefits going forward. I, especially in regards to the tourism aspect, and I think would be a great part of round the harbour and I know there's going to be, I know there's going to be discussion on that and accessibility to it further. But one of the big things I keep going over and over is why Port Otago aren't taking a greater role in this and I agree, everybody says they should be putting their hand up. Because when you look at different documentation and then you go online, in the sense, September 2013, the port makes a record profit of 38 million. Second of August this year, they've just made 28 million dollar profit in selling the shares from a port of Littleton. I'd like to see some of this money actually come back into the community, into projects like this. And I do take my hat off to the Aromuana League for trying to make this happen, but I really think we need to call on the Port Otago to say, hang on, let's start helping some of these local community groups and really take, look after my harbour in a greater way.
Counselor Thompson.
I'm sure we'll be supporting this. I do have, as I expressed in my question, some slight worries that some of the vehicular cuts here might actually be the decrepit nature of the existing wharf bothers me slightly that sometimes the more decrepit it is, the more important it is that it be retained in its current state. I hope that doesn't happen. I just want to reinforce too, this is a, I think almost a unique community in Dunedin. It's one that, where many of the people living out there actually go back through generations of use of that area and it has a cohesiveness about it that I think is, you won't find in many other parts of the community. So I believe that if a community can make this happen, this is the community that can make this happen. And that for us to be investing in extraordinary small money in this absurdity, to quote somebody else, so much of what we value in our world today is actually through previous generations' absurdities. I'm sure there were people probably sitting around board tables 100 years ago who said the railway station should have been in a sand hut and there's no reason why the council needed chambers, they could meet in a hall somewhere. And, you know, we have to invest in things that are not absolutely essential because they add value. And when a community comes to us and says, for an extraordinary small sum of money, which frankly, you would probably have had to spend anyway to make it safe, we can provide a community asset. I think we should be doing everything we possibly can to facilitate that. And for those who are slightly incredulous with regard to the notion that we, that senior management accepted responsibility for this, I'd just draw your attention to papers that have previously come before this board, I'm sorry, before this council, that this is not a surprise. We knew this and we accepted this quite some time ago, so it really shouldn't be an issue now. So I think we should be doing everything we can to facilitate this and allowing a community that's stuck at it for a long time just to get to this point to actually get on with raising the money and turning it into a reality.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. The mayor.
I second this because I see this as an opportunity for a cooperative venture between council and a community group, at very little cost to the ratepayer, to utilise an asset that will really enhance the use of the much bigger asset that we have in the city, which is the harbour. And I also don't see, you know, the difference between demolishing this and pulling it to bits and replacing it is not a great deal. And it doesn't sit well with me that we would, that council might decide to spend money to demolish it, picking up on councillor Wiley's point, when a group is offering to take that burden off us, take responsibility for the restoration and all it will cost this council, there's a couple of impact studies. And I think that, as the motion mentions, I think it is council's responsibility to pay for those studies. It also doesn't sit well with me to say to the League, you pay for the impact study if you want to rebuild it, but we'll pay for it if we have to spend a whole lot more money to pull it down. That doesn't make sense either. So I completely support this. This is a great opportunity and it's, as we noticed, or noted in a few situations in the past, more and more, the things that are going to be built in our community have to be done cooperatively between the community and council and this is a great example of that and I fully support it.
Counselor Hawkins.
Thank you. I support this too for many of the reasons that have already been articulated, particularly around working collaboratively with this community to restore what, in their minds, is, and I agree with them, could potentially be a fantastic asset for us, far beyond the Aromuana township. I do want to see work around this advance, but I do want to flag up because it hasn't been mentioned in this discussion so far, that ultimately the decision may not be ours to make and that even if we do approve a final proposal, that will still be subject, one would suggest, well, as written in this paper, to a publicly notified process with the Department of Conservation around concessions that we may have to make for this. And it does trouble me a little bit, the lack of meaningful input we've had from Dock around this so far, given that they are reserving their right to speak should they need to during a consent process. So with just that reservation, I don't think that anything we are approving today gets in the way of that conversation happening, but I did just want to flag that up and hopefully that it doesn't present obstacles that are insurmountable, but it is something that may not be ultimately in our hands to control.
Any further discussion? I think you've spoken, councillor Vandervis.
If you look at standing orders, I'm committed to speak twice.
You can.
Thank you.
Can I just raise a point of order to double check? What councillor Vandervis is going to do has some parameters. He cannot raise issues that have already been raised by himself. Is that correct?
I would have to seek advice on this.
Mr Graham may be able to help us.
Tell me what your question was.
Well, we wouldn't like to see repetitive debate, would we?
Is that a government's question? I just have to take a break.
I'm not trying to deny the councillor his opportunity to speak twice, but he may take this time if he wants to.
So, thank you, Governance Manager. She has pointed us in the direction of standing order 3.7.2, which refers, says, "In speaking to any motion or amendment, members are to confine their remarks strictly to such motion or amendment and shall not introduce irrelevant matters or indulge in needless repetition. In this matter, the chairperson's ruling is final and not open to challenge." So I would ask councillor Vandervis not to require me to make a ruling in that regard.
Madam Chair, can I please have a ruling on the point of order?
Well, I, I'm not confident that there was a point of order, but the member was pointing in the direction of standing orders and requesting that that be adhered to.
Through the chair, I may have used the term a little bit loosely, but it was after your attention and I just really wanted you to clarify a concern of mine. So if I use point of order in an inappropriate way, I apologise.
What was the point of order?
So I take it then, Madam Chair, that you approve of councillor Neale's anticipating that I am going to vexatiously repeat myself in advance of me actually doing.
that I am going to vexatiously repeat myself in advance of me actually doing that.
No endorsement of any of Councilor Noon's statements. I was requested to, was in clarifying around point of order, and I saw that from the General Manager.
Mayor Calas said, "All it will cost this council is a couple of impact studies." If you read the documents, you'll realise that the first major ongoing and interminable cost to this council will be maintenance of whatever is done down a pilot's wharf. But there's a much greater cost that may affect the whole of the city if this project is allowed to go ahead. And that is the cost to the city of Porto Tago being constrained in being able to dredge a deeper channel for the bigger ships that are anticipated coming into Porto Tago. If this wharf, as I said, to nowhere, a wharf which Councilor Noon has claimed will have emergency potential use. I can just see the rickshaw with the stretcher on it permanently chained to the beginning of the wharf so that it can actually get to some usable road when some emergency gets dropped off there. But getting back to the unspoken, and I believe implied, problem of Porto Tago, if you dredge a deeper channel, it will scour out this particular area of Aramwana Spit. And if there is a wharf there, then you're going to be constrained in being able to get that deeper channel. If we go ahead with this, we are, and I have sympathy with the Aramwana League who have obviously got a lot of affection for the wharf and would have some for it, fishing and whatever, and I can completely see that they would like to have this thing. But we as a council need to look at the bigger picture. And the bigger picture is that this wharf will potentially compromise port access for the later ships, and that it will in fact not have any of the claimed advantages that have been put forward at this meeting. If we go ahead and tick off this extra phase, we need to do so knowing that the real reason Porto Tago have held back and actually wanted this thing to fall down because of their future plans, I believe. And that the idea that this can somehow be a positive for Dunedin needs to be weighed against the ongoing maintenance issues and the compromising of Porto Tago. Thank you for hearing me a second time.
Thank you, Councilmember Vanders. Before I hand that to Councilor Noon for his ready reply, there are a couple of points that I thought I would like to make. The first is, well, I do support this motion, I think, I take my hat off to the Aramwana League for their enthusiasm and for their commitment to this project and for the work that they've done to start to date. And I thank staff for the work that has been done on a recently complex matter with regards to ownership and those sorts of things and the purity of the jet speed. So I think the work that's been done to date has been very valuable. I do have some concerns, and Council Hawkins referred to these, in relation to the developing ecology of that area. I think since, certainly since the wharf was first put in, there have been a number of changes to the way that we understand and value the ecosystems in that area, and certainly there are newcomers in ecological terms or returns in the form of things like the sea lions, which are a recent, which are a recent addition to our ecology in that area. And I acknowledge and thank the Aramwana League for their consideration of that and the proposal. I think the community out there clearly has got a lot of respect for those animals and for their ecology and have proven to have that over a long period. But I think that there is, there are considerations in relation to whether or not an increased number of visitors to that space would have the same level of respect for those ecological assets. However, I do take a lot of, I'm glad that there are concession processes to move through with DOC that would provide proper checking balance on that and enable some discussion about what the most appropriate mitigation or measures would be to ensure that all visitors to that space were cognizant and treated appropriately, the relationship of those assets. So in flagging that, the other thing that I wish to flag was climate change and related sea level rise. I think in finalising the plans for this wharf, it would be sensible for the Aramwana League and for council staff working with the Aramwana League to make available to Aramwana League the most recent information that we have around how sea level rise might impact on that area. Because if we do wish this to be an asset which has a long life and a use beyond the next 30 or so years, then there may well be issues to consider in that regard. None of us would wish to see the use of a perfectly good wharf be brought to an end early because of implications of sea level rise not having been taken into account at the time of reconstruction. So those are the two issues which I wish to raise. I support this motion and hand it to Councilor Noon for his ready reply.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I only want to pick up on two points, and one, I'm afraid to say, the Council of Vanders' suggestion that this is a wharf to nowhere effectively is a joke. And if that's the heading tomorrow in the Atagatai Times, the rest of us have been ineffective in terms of getting our point across. And I think also, it's an insult also to the Aramwana League and the West Harbour community if that's what the message is in the Atagatai Times. And I'm hopeful that they will have a positive spin on it. The reality is this is not a wharf to nowhere. The reality is that the existing structure, although it's in poor condition, has historically been valued in a, not only, in a cultural sense, but in a recreational sense, and when it is restored and reused, it will even add greater value to that use in the future. Picking up on the point of Council Wiley talking about Porto Tago's responsibilities, I can assure you that the best people to talk to Porto Tago are the Aramwana League. They are the ones that have got the best connections with the people at port, and I use the word could, they could be involved in some form, but I don't know that for a fact. But the reality is that that could happen. Best I'll leave my comments as that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. So with that, I will put the three motions as up on the screen. Does anyone wish me to take those separately? Does anyone wish me to take those separately? If not, I will put them all together. I've had a call for a division, so I'll do that from the window.
Council Benson Pope?
Aye.
Council Bezir?
Aye.
Councilor Colb?
Aye.
Councilor Hall?
Aye.
Councilor Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilor Lord?
Aye.
Councilor Monte? I'm sorry. Should be till last, then. Councilor Noon?
Aye.
Council Pete?
Aye.
Council Stan?
Aye.
Council Thompson?
Aye.
Council Vanders?
Aye.
Council Wiley?
Aye.
Mayor Cal?
Aye.
And some more questions?
Karen, please, in one. Thank you both very much. So that takes us to item six on Dunedin, which is the draft engagement policy, Wapten Tanny and Maria and Brinda. Hand over to you guys, make any introductory comments.
So a draft engagement policy has been developed. It meets the new requirements of the most recent LGA amendments. It provides a framework for two things. Firstly, determining the significance of decisions, and secondly, when and how the community can expect to be involved in the council's decision making. There's a tight timeframe for adopting a significant engagement policy, as the council is required to do so before 1 December this year. The draft policy has been based on good practice guidance, and it's had input from councillors, council departments and the community. Staff are seeking approval for the draft policy from community feedback, and we've developed a draft community engagement plan to facilitate that feedback over the next four weeks.
Thank you. I just have a question around a 2.2 criteria for significance and whether there is any hierarchy there. For example, if there were an issue where a community were strongly divided, but also had very strong strategic alignment, which of those would be given priority?
So there is, oh, through the chair, there is, there is no hierarchy of criteria, so it would be making an assessment against each criterion as to the degree of significance of the decision. So for that example, it may be considered a high degree of significance due to the division in community views?
So as long as one of those criteria has a strong degree of significance, and that would be?
It may be considered significant.
Okay. I'd like to move an amendment to page 6.15, Schedule 1 Strategic DCC Ode Assets, where it says significant council holdings in Dunedin City Holdings Limited, to be amended to say council holdings in Dunedin City Holdings Limited.
Okay. So just to get my head around, are you moving the recommendation with that amendment? So that, the significant engagement policy? With the amendment, okay. Second, Council Benson Pope, so if you'd like to repeat your...
On Schedule 1 Strategic DCC Ode Assets, removing the word significant before council holdings in Dunedin City Holdings Limited.
Okay. So I note that that's been moved and it's been indicated that there is a second for that. What I would like to do is finish questions, and, yeah, and perhaps you may wish to ask the staff about some, I'm guessing, you may wish to ask the staff to comment on that, but you may not.
Last question, I don't know.
Yeah, questions, yes, yeah.
I'd like to know what Council Hawkins is, where he's heading for with that, whether what he means, if it says council holdings in Dunedin City Holdings, council has award to Dunedin City Holdings on the hold, or does that mean that if one of Dunedin City Holdings companies had a contract, that would be a problem? I'm not sure what Council Hawkins was wanting to flag out.
Well, it was a specific reference to our share holdings in Dunedin City Holdings Limited. So I'm happy to say, I'm happy to change that if that is clear or...
So you're changing the shareholder, so that any time instead of us being a 100% shareholder, if one of those, we might be contemplating changing to being an 80% shareholder in a council, or that being? That's what you're intending to add?
Correct.
Could we maybe say that a wee bit differently, so as we know of that?
Yeah, well, I stand to be corrected, and you may need further staff advice on this, but I would think that even if you changed it to read council shareholders in DCHL, we have shareholders in DCHL, we do not have direct shares in subsidiary companies. So it would need the wording, if what you're intending to do is reflect shareholders in subsidiary entities, the wording, that wording would not do that, I don't think. But I stand to be corrected by someone who's... Tammy?
Through the chair, that would be my understanding.
So what it might do is, if there are any further questions, we'll go to those whilst you work on some wording which covers what it is that you're seeking to achieve. Any further questions? Yes, Council?
Just, you proposed to hit the ground running, that is tomorrow. With this and changing anything now, that's going to be possible, I guess, but could you just clarify what needs to happen if there are changes?
Through the chair, so we have designed the documentation and some of the advertising material, so it's just at the design stage at the moment, so we will hit the print button if that is approved by council, the draft policy and any minor amendments can be included in that.
Any further questions? I was interested in whether or not we, given that we have consulted on how we are consulting, whether our consulting on this matter will be best practice, and which part of the framework we would be utilising on. Bigger two, I'm assuming that it falls within the consultation, but are we going to be doing anything, given that it's such a dry topic, are there ways that we can be a bit excited about this?
So through the chair, mainly, you're, yeah, you're right, we are mainly consulting, we are having a workshop that falls within the involve con. So we will be using traditional methods, so immediate release, this document, static displays at libraries and service centres and the like. We're also having an online chat with the mayor, and we're going to pop up events at community, community events, so we're going to, the likes of the Vogel Street Party, the South Dene Street Festival, we're going to the community to get their feedback.
Thank you. I wonder did Council Hawkins and Council Thompson have reached the equation?
No, no. I mean, with the, the point that she raised, it might be quite valid, that you could equally argue that it's, that it's already made since what is written. Because I think, because my, my interpretation of what is written is that it is supposed to reflect what Dunedin City Holdings Limited owns as opposed to Dunedin City Holdings itself, but it doesn't actually say anything like this.
There's a way forward that we, that we ask, that we move a motion that clarifies what we would like it to mean, or what the majority of them, of you, what the majority of the committee would like it to mean, and ask the staff to finalise wording to be kept with sign off through the air. I'll leave that as a question for me and Council Benson Pope.
Well, I was wondering if that, I agree with the comment displayed by Council Thompson, I'm wondering if that couldn't be achieved, or removing the word significant, adding it to the clause and adding at the end of the sentence, and it's subsidiary. And then there's no issue about those that aren't 100%, that's covered anyway, we know that, we don't have 100% of all those companies that have been here for them, and it makes it clear that if there's any suggestion that's a change in holdings of members of the group, then it has to be followed on. That, that wouldn't be contentious.
That wouldn't be contentious, I would imagine.
So just to thank you for that suggestion, just a question for staff. Firstly, would you be comfortable with that amendment? And secondly, when you use the word holdings, are you referring specifically to share holdings? Because I think that would be critical if we were to make the amendment which councillor Benson-Pope is referring to.
Through the chair, it was intended to be the share holdings. So I've got down here council share holdings and DCHR and its subsidiaries as the amendment.
Councillor Thompson?
Well, I was just going, it may be much the same thing. But I was just going to say if it said changes in the subsidiary holdings of Dunedin City Holdings Limited. Because the reason, the reason I'm saying that is because that's actually about Dunedin City Holdings Limited policy and that's what we have an interest in. If you talk about the subsidiaries per se, we don't actually have an interest in them. We have an interest in the public sense, but we don't have an ownership interest in them. So our interest is in what DCHR is choosing to do with the subsidiaries. So, and I think that that was the intent. So if we were to leave out the significant, it would simply state changes in the subsidiary holdings of Dunedin City Holdings Limited.
Councillor Calvert? Councillor Page? And then will have staff coming?
I think there's potential for problems there too. And I wonder whether what we're heading for is, that the issue is reducing our holdings in some of these. I'm wondering, for example, whether what comes out of the stadium review might not, for technical or accounting or other reasons, turn out to be something that changes the holdings of DCHR because a company switches from one place to another or rearranges themselves in the basket. And you don't want to go out and consult with the public necessarily about whether you put them in this basket or this basket, which would change our shareholding in that basket, when actually it's not selling off the family silver sort of discussion. If what we're aiming for is reduction in our holdings rather than a rearrangement. Otherwise, we would have to go out and consult on something that turned out to be just rearranging something that wasn't actually, it was just for technical reasons.
I think I would share the same concern if DML and DPL sat within DCHR, but they don't. They are managed by DCHR, but they are not part of the group.
Well, if it was proposed they were, I think we'd have to consult that it was proposed they were, or one was and one wasn't. If we, if we chose to make that assumption.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. I take your point, you know. Hopefully councillor Thompson?
Well, I think the problem is that it is, it's, the schedule itself is a list of DCC owned assets, whereas, and, and, I know you tell the public this, I don't even believe you, but we don't actually own those assets. So it may be that the best way to handle it might simply be a subsidiary thing which related to, which was more a policy issue that we have an interest in, which would be changes in the subsidiary holdings policy of Dunedin City Holdings Limited. But if it sits, if you're trying to, you're trying to make something out of, in essence, that the line that's there doesn't belong there either because we don't own it, so it's not listed.
Well, I will say, I'm happy to take councillor Benson-Pope's advice on that.
If I may paraphrase what councillor Staines and I were just muttering about, and he can correct me if I'm a stupid of what he's saying. If the statement of corporate intent on Dunedin City Holdings contained a consultation clause.
Which it does.
Then there's no issue. It does in terms of the concern and then we, in terms of the subsidiaries in the group, if it does. You say it does?
My belief is that it does.
Then we can just focus happily on, and change that as long as you want to change it and happily focus on the tour as it is here with the removal of the first letter.
I think that would be a way forward. But if we did that, then there probably needs to be an explanatory note in here which makes that clear to the public. That would be helpful.
Okay. So in that case, if we can ensure that there is a statement of intent clause which ensures that that does happen, would we revert to the original wording here, which is significant council holdings of DCHR? Or would we still remove significant?
You could leave it in there because that, we do own DCHR and DCHR could decide to flog off forty percent of its shares to private equity, in which case you would most certainly think that we would want to have some say in that. No, it couldn't, it couldn't. It could only suggest to us, we own the shares.
Did you just leave Dunedin City Holdings Limited?
Yes.
So just Dunedin City Holdings Limited, which we are, isn't it?
Yes, that's all you meant.
Very good.
Okay. So councillor Hawkins' motion for shared vote would read, would change that line, significant council holdings of DCHR Limited, to simply reading DCHR Limited? And what councillor Thompson? Dunedin City Holdings Limited, yeah. And councillor Thompson suggested amendment also say in addition to the notes, which referred to a statement of intent clause, which requires consultation with the shareholder in the event of changes to subsidiary holdings. I am conscious that I have made a statement about the fact that there is a clause in there, that is my recollection, but it's not, will we go through a process to revamp that in the next six months? So if I am, with ten percent chance I'm wrong, we could make that amendment. But we could, is there any possibility of staff confirming whether or not we have a clause in the DCHR statement of intent which requires consultation with the shareholder about changes in subsidiary holdings? I'm just trying to find my mind.
Wait, please, throughout online documents? So. Sorry, we're just trying to work out, is it covered by the note at the bottom?
Oh.
Which statement did you have?
DCHR?
DCHR.
No, can't find it. You could be right. So councillor Thompson, might just having a look at the third note? Yeah, the third note on page 6.15. Does that meet with your requirements?
Yes, on the statement of intent. My reflection, the statement is just mildly different to yours. It does give them a certain amount of dollars where.
Yeah, it does.
Do what they want.
Yeah.
But I think in essence, look, this is, this is a statement of a set of principles. It's telling the public how we intend to go about consulting. And I think that the remarks there enables us. I think it's all right to say that.
So we have two choices. We can either wait for Ms. Graham to find the statement of intent for DCHR. Or if there is a word in place, which has suggested. Mayor Cal?
While we're resolving it, I'd like to raise another, maybe possibly pedantic issue. But I think that the word owned ought to be taken out. These are strategic DCC assets. We don't actually own them all. We don't own the Fortune Theatre, we own the building. We don't own Olveston House, we hold it in trust. And I think it would be, would have the same effect if we just said strategic DCC assets that we would be required to consult on, were anything to change. And I note that that would require the heading to change, but also in the first paragraph above the list, which I note are just examples in any case. On the last line, some examples of DCC owned, and that word owned would have to come out there too. But I think it would be prudent to take that word out.
I'll ask staff whether or not we are able to do that under statute.
We think that's fine.
I think that's fine. Councillor Hawkins, would you be happy to incorporate that into your amendment resolution? So Pat, that would be that the word owned is removed from the title and also, is it the first paragraph of the wish?
Yeah, the very last short line in that first paragraph. It's word owned, so it's going to come out.
Any last questions?
I don't think there's not any connection.
Yeah. Can I have a show of hands as to which councillors would like to wait until we hit the DCHR's current statement of intent until we move this motion? So if you would like to wait, as you can, no one?
Just out of interest, I didn't find DCHR, but I found Delta. And Delta has a clause in it that says the approval of the shareholder is required before disposal by the company of any segment of its business or shares in a subsidiary or associate company. So if that carried through in the period of company suspending it there.
Yeah. My revelation is that it does, but there may be a caveat on it, which is a certain amount of money or a certain amount of value, as councillor Thompson.
Since I could, would be very careful. Circulated later, perhaps I'll try and send an email.
I think the point is that we can change the statement of intent processes coming up. We would have an ability to change it at that point should we wish to, should we feel that it's not watered tight. Okay, super. So just to run through those changes again, councillor Hawkins is moving that we approve the document for purpose of consultation, the amendments, removal of the word owned in the title and first paragraph, and change of significant council holdings of DCHR to read simply DCHR. Is everyone clear on that? Do you still have the second councillor, councillor Benson-Pope? Thank you all very much for that collaborative process. I will, I will put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, that's carried. So that takes us, thanks very much. Good luck with consultations. To item seven, notification of items to share. Ms. Garana, we move to the resolution to exclude the public. I'll move that we exclude the public. Second, councillor Page, I'll put motion, all those in favour. Against, that's carried.